Someday I'll change that maybe.
Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting of independent school district work A 44 to order. Clerk, do you want to establish a quorum for us, please?
Certainly. Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hurry.
Present.
Steven Biggess.
Here.
And Pruevy Anderson.
We'll be here shortly.
Right. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Agenda passes. We're going to move on to our reports and we're going to have our Family Consumer Science come up and speak and curriculum implementation. So welcome.
Thank you. So I'm just going to highlight a few things. I know that you had some mailing sent to you and if you happen to have them in front of you, I'm going to first of all talk about the implementation plan overview and then we'll go through the three different mappings and then we'll end with the requests and I'll just highlight some of the main things and if you have questions at the end, I'd be glad to answer them. So I get to represent my department and so one of the things that drives us as a department is that we are a career and tech program, career and tech ed program and so we have certain guidelines that tell us what a quality program is and so some of those things are things that guided us throughout this process so I think we have a little bit of an advantage being career and tech ed because we don't just look at curriculum every eight years when we do this, it's an ongoing type of process. So there are certain things that the state lays out for us that make up a quality program and I just want to highlight a few of those. And one of those is an advisory committee and so we do have an active advisory committee. We meet twice a year and so they give us input all the time on our curriculum and what they see as important things in industry that we need to be thinking about in the classroom. So that's really an important part. Another thing is having staff with appropriate credentials and I feel so fortunate to be in a department where we have really a strong, strong teachers and another one coming on and we're going to get to that a little bit more later but we have a fully staffed department, which is wonderful. Another thing is having a continuous improvement plan and so every five years under career and tech ed, we have to have our program approved by the state. So just last year, we went through a program approval process and so when we, our program is fully approved but they also give us suggestions for things that we can do to have an exemplary program. So some of those suggestions kind of went into what we did to, as we were writing our curriculum for this year. The mapping that we have done kind of reflects some of the suggestions of our state specialist. We have a state fax specialist while also taking into consideration some of the local recommendations because sometimes what they see at the state are not what our community sees as important. So we kind of have to kind of mesh the two together. Another part of that quality program is career development and that is also a very important part of what we do. And as you know, there is legislation that requires every student to have this personal learning plan and so a lot of what we do in our curriculum has to do with putting together some of those pieces of that personal learning plan. And one of the big things we've done this year is to take a look at the system that we're using to make this happen and we are making a change from using Naviance to using MCIS, which is a Minnesota product. And so it kind of aligns more closely with what the state wants from us as far as that personal learning plan. The other thing that is a quality fax program is having a variety of instructional delivery methods and that has been kind of foremost as we're thinking about curriculum with a variety of learning opportunities, trying to kind of give them variety in the ways that they learn and also meaningful student assessment. So in some of our mappings, you don't see a lot of, you know, tests or exams but maybe sometimes it's more realistic, more everyday types of assessments and in the real world, an example I guess I gave to the curriculum review is that in the school store, they have a production assembly line and if those products sell in the store, well, that's success. If they don't sell, then it's not success. And so being able to see in the real world how assessment works. So that's something that we have shot toward too. And the last thing I wanted to highlight on that section is that access to technology and that that is such an important part of what we do and that kind of has driven some of our requests that we'll get to later but just two that I'll mention right now is that the Chrome cards in the classrooms is really important. We need to have that access to technology, even if it's for 15 minutes of our class period every day that we can just grab those Chromebooks and we can go from there and also smart boards. And we have faculty in our department who love to do interactive things and that's an important part of that request. So that's kind of that, an overview of that first sheet. And the process that we went through in doing our curriculum review, we did some research, both on paper. Carrie was good at providing us with some resources that we can look through to see what schools are doing that are similar to our size. We also did a visit to Alexandria schools. We looked at their foods department. Michelle had the opportunity to talk to them about their design program. So we, we looked at what they were doing. We also made some adjustments in our current course offerings based upon our needs. For example, in the school store, if you've taken a look at the school store stuff lately, they're doing a lot of really cool stuff, but we need some production in the fall as well as the spring. So we've kind of shifted things around to account for that. We, one of the biggest things that we had to do this go around is to align our curriculum to the new Minnesota fax frameworks. And you guys are probably used to hearing the language of standards but for fax, because there are no state standards, we have frameworks and suggested things that we are covering in our classes. So the last time we did curriculum writing, we didn't have frameworks or they were kind of outdated and so now we have these new frameworks and you'll see that when we get to our mapping. And we submitted our requests and submitted our requests that we can kind of fulfill all of those learning targets that we have on our mapping. And then of course, we went through the process of presenting to our curriculum review committee as well. So in looking at the mapping samples, if you have them, starting with, we have the child development and guidance, just a few things to point out about our mapping in general. This is the format that we have used for our mapping. We have them all on one document with tabs at the bottom so that we can all see what each other are working on, making sure that we're reinforcing some things from the past and also adding new to our classes so we can see what other people are doing. Let's see. If you, you notice we have our topics laid out. We also have our frameworks that come from the Minnesota frameworks and then also the benchmark and benchmarks and competencies come from that Minnesota framework. The learning targets are local that we are, those are kind of the stepping stones to kind of get to those benchmarks and so those are on each one of our documents. And one of the things on the child development one, Michelle has ordered a new textbook for that class and so she has not finished her assessments and activities because some of those things will change based upon the new materials that are coming in. And Michelle also teaches a lot of Singleton's, so she had lots of these to do and so this is a work in progress. But the, the important part is that we have that mapping laid out and now this summer she can finish on that. As far as the, the next one, the Family Consumer Science 7, this is a good example of one of our middle school mappings and this also is based on the Minnesota fax frameworks, but there's a special one just for middle school and so Katie has pulled in those middle school frameworks. Also has on there lots of different activity examples that we might use and some of the resources that we will need to accomplish those. Also she has written down, you know, the duration of each of these units just to kind of keep on test so that we get everything finished in that timeframe that we have and this could easily be followed by somebody else as well. And then the last one is the financial and life management and this reflects a required class in our department. We cover a lot of different topics in this class and so you can go through and see the different topics and also how much time is designated to each of those so that we are sure to cover that.
See Catherine, if I get one question from the public, it's, "Don't you teach them anything about finance?"
Oh my goodness.
So for the, for the public, can you list some of the things that are done on there?
Absolutely. And so on the third page, if you have it in front of you, this is where we get into the personal finance and we spend about five or six weeks on personal finance. And, and we do this, we start in eighth grade. We just did a three or four day finance unit just to kind of whet their appetite. It's an interactive online game that we play. And then in ninth grade, they come back to it and they talk about checking accounts and how to manage those. And then as juniors, these are the topics that we cover. So we start off with goal setting and decision making, which really is what drives our budget. Then we go and talk about paychecks, what is on a paycheck, what comes out for taxes, understanding, all of that. We spend a couple of weeks on budgeting and record keeping. Then we do about four to five days on banking and financial institutions. We have guest speakers come in from the community to talk about that as well. Then we do a week on saving and investing. Just had a guest speaker this last semester on investing. And then we do a little bit on, or a lot, on credit, the importance of managing that well. A little bit on identity protection, insurance and risk management. We had a speaker come in on that as well. And I find that having speakers come in from the community really helps students tune in and it's like, wow, this, this must be really important. And then we end with college and career readiness, about three weeks on that. So it's definitely something that we cover in that class. There's also, the, the thing that I would mention too about this one is that we really want to make sure that we have our benchmark, benchmarks, our competencies really in line. How it's taught might change. We have a new person coming in to teach this and they're going to use their own learning activities. They're going to come up with their own assessments but as long as we have a roadmap for them, we feel that it, it is in print is what we want this course to be. So there we go. Questions that you have? Oh, no, we have one more document. We have our requests, the most important sheet probably. And so the last sheet talks about some of the main things that we have requested as a department. So we have requested Chromebooks and we feel very strongly about that. We are probably going to lose some computer access next year with our large population coming in so just the ability to have that present. A lot of what we do with careers, you can't get a textbook to teach careers. You have to have things that are constantly updated and changing, so we use them a lot. We've also requested smart boards and iPads for each of the teachers and as I mentioned earlier, fax teachers tend to be very interactive and we like to do hands-on things and so we need to have things that will engage our students. We also, Michelle has requested some infant simulations and I guess I would say that we've come a long way since carrying around a bag of flour or an egg and these are computerized babies. They have sensors in them. They can tell if they have comforted them, if they have changed their diaper. The car seats have sensors in them and so it gets a computer printout when they're done of how they have cared for that baby. So it's quite, quite advanced technologically. As far as textbooks, we have a new child development textbook and also an interior design and fashion textbook that have been requested. Design software is for things that they do to design stuff for the school store. Also sewing machines and our advisory committee was kind of shocked to see the age of our sewing machines when we gave them a tour of our department and it is overdue time for some new sewing machines. We have some electric ranges in the middle school. Ours have held up quite well at the high school and we're hanging on there. We haven't requested those. Also serve safe curriculum and I wanted to point this one out because this is something that comes from our state fax specialist and there's a real push towards getting our students certifications that they can have to go out into the workforce. And so this serve safe would give them kind of a, just an advantage if they're applying for jobs in the food service industry. Finance simulation, going back to what we teach about finance. One of the activities we do is we place kids in these random families. They pick a name and they get put in a family and they have to create a budget for a family situation and there's all different situations. We have single people, we have married people, we have married people with kids, all, all different situations and it reflects the United States by population. So racially, educationally, all of these things, it represents the United States. And then just miscellaneous replacement, small equipment for mostly our kitchens. And our kitchens are used a lot. They're used a lot by us and they're used a lot by community ed and so after eight years, things tend to get a little worn out. So those are the, the main things that we have requested. So questions that you might have?
What does the Safe Serve Curriculum certify? I mean, is it for servers or prep or both?
It's a food safety and sanitation certification.
Okay.
And so they would get a little certificate if we go through the entire program and, and that's something that we were not at right now, but moving in that direction. And so then they would get the instruction during the classroom and then they could take the test and then they would get a certificate that if they were to apply for a job, say, "I am serve safe certified."
And they would take this, what, what year or where, what?
We, it's not actually written into our curriculum because we don't have it yet but I, my idea would be the advanced foods courses where it would be. We teach food safety and sanitation in every one of our courses and so they get the basics but we have not at this point implemented that. And, and I think what has been holding us back is because it's so time consuming. So you're talking about, you know, three or four weeks of your curriculum that is going to be dedicated towards that. So we have, with this curriculum, we have the ability to do that. And, and we listen to our advisory committee on that. It's like, and we've asked them in our advisory committee meetings, "Would this help? Is this going to be beneficial to students?" and we're just still kind of a little bit on the fence, but we'll use the materials regardless because they're good materials, so.
So who's on the advisory committee? Not people, but like what, how do you, how do you decide who is on the?
It has to represent industry. So we have someone from food service. We have someone from the design world. We have in the past had someone from textiles. We've had a little trouble filling that one lately. We have someone from the child development area and, and that, our person happens to be a daycare center so most of their input is, they email us ahead of time some things to share with the committee because they can't always be there. We have administration. We have student representation and then our faculty.
Do you have any finance people?
Oh yes, and we do have finance people too. Yeah, we have some, a bank or on there.
Yep. Textbooks that you're replacing, are they going to be online? A lot of the curriculum is going to online?
The textbooks are paper, but the resources that go along with the textbooks are online resources.
So they can be updated all the time?
Yes, so it's an ongoing. And we pay a subscription to that? Is that correct? Yeah. But yeah, the textbooks are actual, you can touch them.
Other questions from the board?
I got a question here just on the, the aim to find balance between local and state curricular recommendations.
Yes.
And I'm just looking at the finance and life and how much you are covering, which is all good stuff. I mean, it's all good.
Yeah.
So how do you, if people continue to recommend, usually people don't take away, so if they're doing a recommendation, is it come to a point where we have to look at, I mean, I don't know, adding a semester or something? Because this is all life applicable stuff. I mean, it's all good stuff.
I know. And this is our challenge because what we, we used to have a recommended like family living type of class and then we had a required careers class. And so, and it got to the point where we felt like students had too many required classes and so we condensed that into one class, which resulted in it being, you know, I always tell my students, "I'm exposing you to all of these ideas with the hopes that you are going to go out on your own and you are going to learn more about this." So recommendations from the state, I think that we, we are covering a lot of what the state would recommend. I feel like where we run into kind of a little differentiation between what the state wants and what our local wants is a lot of times in the, in the food service area, they want it to be totally leading to a career in food service. Well, that kind of leaves out a lot of kids in our opinion. It's like we, we want to teach kids how to cook healthy meals for their daily living because it's a lost art. And so those are more of the areas where I feel like we have to kind of balance a little bit. But yeah, we do cover a lot of topics in that class and
That's ton.
It's a lot.
That's all good stuff.
Yeah, I know, that's the thing.
Kids will learn to know and, you know.
But yeah, like the area of family, it's like three, four days. It's like, oh man, I would love to take three, four weeks and talk about family, but we just, we can't because we need to get to that other stuff too.
And then, anybody else have a question?
Okay, I have one other question. Just on the continued attendance at the regional networking meetings
Yeah.
for Lakes Country Source Club, can you tell me how has that enhanced your program? Or how has that worked? I mean, just for?
That's really a hard question because I, back in the day when Carrie and I started going to these meetings, it was very beneficial as far as we networked a lot about ideas and it has become very, we talk a lot about legislation there. And so, yes, we get updated on what's going on with Carl Perkins legislation but I miss a little bit of the, the networking that we used to have. So, but I guess in this day and age, we have Facebook pages now that we network on and that kind of thing so I think it's changed a little bit, but it does keep us up to date. Troy Huggan will help us walk through that program approval process that we have to go through every five years and tell us where we need, the direction that our program needs to be going. So it's good. It's very good. It's just a little different than the flavor it used to be.
Sure.
But we, it's, I think it's really important for our staff to attend that to, to just stay up on being a progressive program.
Any other questions from the board? Well, thank you.
All right.
Moving on to our next report, we have Scott Colbeck, our elementary principal.
That's keyboard members. Good morning.
Yeah, once we get him in here.
I'll do my Melanie impression this morning. Good morning, everybody. So this morning, maybe I decided to keep my presentation narrow in scope and then go deeper. In front of you, you have a document that I wanted to pre. I'm going to grab you one. You have one that looks like this?
This one.
Oh, okay. Very good. So I just want to, and what I'm going to share with you this morning is, this is just business as usual. There's nothing atypical about what I'm going to share with you today. This is, every year, this is what we do. I just haven't explained it really in depth. And so, you know, we start with a census. We call it the Class of 2032 Census. So those were all of the kids then and the number is 315. We are aware of 315 kids and those 315 kids were added to this census starting five years ago. It used to be a function out of the McKinley office, Joan Helgeson. Now it's Molly Bannison that, that takes care of this. So Molly, right now, has a Class of 2033 Census, 34, 35, 36. And as she is aware of students of certain ages, she'll go in and put them into the, the correct census. So this 315 students has happened over, over many years and we've gotten to that number. I wanted to let you know that as, as of today, we have 175 kids officially registered for kindergarten. However, 13 other families have told us that their student is coming but they just haven't turned in the paperwork yet. So if I were to tell you today, or if you were to ask how many students would show up for kindergarten tomorrow, if it started tomorrow, I would say to you 188. The 175 officially registered plus the 13 that we have contacted who said, "Yep, we're coming." We just haven't turned in the paperwork yet. So then we have another category, 65 students. Those families have told us that their child has other plans. And then I'll, I'll break that down. Again, that's typical. And then we have 62 students in another category and those are the ones that I can assure you, we're working really, really hard to help. What I mean by that is we're working the phones. Our, our McKinley office staff, I want to recognize, you know, there's three people in and out of the office from time to time depending on the time of the day and they work those phones to try to contact those 62 students. Those, that group, that's the group that will register between now and the start of school and the majority of them who do end up registering will wait until the last half of August or even the beginning of September. Again, typical, 13 years of being in the position and just kind of knowing how that kind of works. So if we break down our 175 that are officially registered, 171 are all day, everyday kids. Included in that 171 are 10 students who are going to repeat kindergarten. And we have four students who are registered for Monday, Wednesday, Friday and then of course the 13 who are telling us that they're coming. So with our 188 students, for example, if we had 10 sections of kindergarten and if we started school tomorrow with 188 kids, with 10 kindergarten teachers, we'd have 18.8 kids per class. So the majority of them would have 19 in a class. So if we look at our 65 kids who have other plans, and again, this is, this is very typical. It's, it's normal. We have 12 families who have told us that their child will be attending a nearby school district. We have three very nearby school districts. So those 12 will be going to one of those three. We have five families who have told us they're homeschooling their child. Nine have told us that they're, they've either moved or are moving. 24 are attending our two parochial schools in town. Three have told us they're doing preschool again. And then 10 have told us, "Hey, we're going to wait one year. We know our child is old enough to go to kindergarten, but we're going to," we call it red shirting. We're going to red shirt. And then of the 62 that I talked about, that we're just working really hard to try to track them down, 20 of those 62, we have left messages. And now I'm, I'm saying we haven't left one message. We go back and we leave a second message. We will be leaving a third message before the school year's over. 16 of them, and again, these, what I'm sharing with you, these are the notes that have been taken by either Michelle or Amy or Heidi who are helping us do the calling. 16 without a phone, 13 were unable to leave a message to a busy signal, a wrong number, incomplete number, one hung up on us. An incorrect number, no answer. So I mean, it's just, it's the gamut, right? But those, it's from that group, I just want to stress, it's from that group of 62 where that number of 188 will grow. That number of 188 will grow considerably and it'll come from this group of 62 and, and it will also, there will be people who contact us to register their child for kindergarten who are not in the 315, who are not in the 315. So I wanted to point that out to you as well. Now this number of 188, I just want you to know, has grown, I think, by four students since I sent Superintendent Ness an email late last week that I think he shared with all of you. So if you're wondering, hey, why was it 184 and now it's 188? Because that, that just grew over the last couple of days of school, families contacting us with McKinley office. So I think I've covered kind of that, that summary. Can I entertain any questions from any of you?
Do you have any idea what percentage of these 62 will be enrolling?
Well, let's, let's just say half of them did. Let's say 30 of them did, right? If 30 of them do and we have 10 teachers, that's three more into each classroom. So that bumps that number from 19 to about 22. The, the advantage of knowing at this time, how many kindergarten teachers? The, uh, the advantage of knowing at this time, how many kindergarten teachers we might have to work with, is that I'm not looking for a kindergarten teacher in, we'll say, July, or August, when it gets really challenging to find a kindergarten teacher.
Share your registration number. So you get about sixty-five percent, is that correct?
Yeah, so in late March, we always have our kindergarten registration held in the McKinley Gymnasium. And we've done it enough times over the years to know that about sixty-five percent of our incoming kindergarten class will show up that night and participate in that night. Most of them register that night, but some of them come, but, you know, still haven't completed the, the paperwork. But that number, um, that number at the night of kindergarten registration was, you know, was lower than one eighty-eight. I don't want you to think that one eighty-eight is sixty-five percent of our incoming class, because then we'd be, I think, in a little bit of trouble.
I, but I, I do think the number was about two twenty-five then, between two twenty-five and thirty, so...
When we did the math.
When we did the math on that number. So they put a hundred and forty-nine that showed up that night, and you figure that out, so. Big class, again, coming in, the way it looks. And a little bit surprised that it was this big again, to be honest, but, go ahead.
Um, so kindergarten, you want a smaller class size than like a third or fourth grade? What, what kind of class sizes is like the, the max or the target that you're looking for? Just for, like, econ, you know, economics and a lot.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, right, it depends on who you ask.
Yeah.
I know Mark's in Norway.
He'll tell you something.
Mark's in Norway, who can't hear you at all.
You know, I would say, I would say twenty-two. I think if we can, you know, cap it at about twenty-two, I, I know as a building principal, I'm pretty comfortable with that number.
Yeah, we, I don't believe we've gone over twenty-four. It is kind of, we, within tough economic years, we've gone to twenty-four and, and, but I don't think we've ever been in, you know, maybe the odd class was...
Yeah, you know, I think, yeah, I think we've, I think we crept into about twenty-six some years ago, and it's a distant memory. But again, so, you know, we're sitting at, like I say, eighteen point eight, so think of it nineteen per class. And if we took in thirty more, we'd be at twenty-two.
These sixteen people are families that don't have a phone, so now what? How do you contact them?
Just give me a list and all.
Well, mainly, they probably have phones, but they're cell phones, so they're not, you know, listed and stuff, so, so, uh, yeah, we'll have to do mailings and stuff.
You know, the way we contact them, right, is they get the initial mailing that everybody else receives, so...
Just dear postal customer kind of mailing, right, to all the households?
Yeah.
Or not necessarily all of them, but just all the targeted ones, right? On a tangential kind of connection, do, as far as registration for kindergarteners goes, are we online with that yet with Synergy? Or are we doing paper yet? Are we, because I understand we're...
We're getting really close, Elaine, are we?
We're, we're hoping on July first, is what Stu Lewis says. We're, we've done a bunch of testing, and the testing has, um, shown some issues that we're trying to resolve with the Region One still yet, just to make sure it's as smooth as possible.
Great.
Yeah, so right now, it's, I, it was a lot larger project, I think, than anticipated. And, um, and so, and there were some bumps still to work out, but they're hoping July first, which is, that'll work out just fine, time-wise and everything. Registrations usually don't really start up until at least mid-July, and then they're still a little, um, sporadic until August. August is when we really need to be up and running, a hundred percent. August is when we, we kind of hit the ground running with the registrations.
And what you're talking about is having a parent that could go in, put all their contact information in.
One time.
One time, and then register, if they have three or four kids, they don't have to go in and do the same, which they do right now, and over and over and over, so redundancy.
Yeah. And the, the first year, I thought, was burdensome, just because there's, it's all fresh and so many different emergency contact pieces and all that.
So we're trying to eliminate as much as a pa, of the paperwork as we possibly can. And with that, as you know, um, registering students, each, um, building has another set of paperwork. So those are things that are, you know, fine-tuning.
Great. As a thought, Melissa, to your inquiry, perhaps with, um, the truancy program, you know, because at this time of the year, truancy schmoancy, we have four days left, whatever, or whatever. And so maybe we could add that, that wouldn't be that burdensome for, uh, if, if we have a truancy officer that will go up and field and kind of knock doors. Because it's, again, on the tangential, but slightly connected, so, it's a thought.
Is the school of choice, is that in this, um, other plan, is that included in that?
It would be if they, if that's what they would tell us.
Okay.
So we're just reporting what they are telling us.
So I don't see that listed, is that under homeschool?
They would start out in the homeschool part, but once they sign up for school of choice, that part of it, they're not homeschool.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're our students for, they, they've been going Tuesdays, Thursdays, and some sign up for Fridays as well. So we have them, uh, some of the students up to almost halftime.
Right.
And then they're, uh, they're our student then.
Do we get full funding for that, or is it just part?
Well, you get funding for the time they're here.
Okay.
So if they're here Tuesdays, Thursday, you get forty percent. If they're there Friday, Friday as well, then you'd...
Sure.
Scott, you've said you've been doing census numbers, you know, for quite a while, so what do the census numbers look for future classes? As far as a trend up or down?
Yeah, you know, Kirby, I haven't, I haven't looked at what the, and, and probably the reason I don't look is, it, those, they'd be so small right now. They'll just grow tremendously. Be interesting to know, Molly would maybe know, hey, one year ago, what did this number of three hundred fifteen look like?
Sure. Okay.
We, we can get that.
You probably, you probably, it's kind of the same type of question. So like, if, if, let's say this class is two ten, do, do classes kind of stay at that level all the way up? Or do they kind of, do they, do they tend to grow by, you know, five, seven, five to seven students a year on average?
I have that data, it's more two to three until we get into the, uh, fourth grade where the prairie. Uh, we, we get kids coming over the prairie. But the big one is when the sixth grade parochial schools, uh, they're, so seventh grade is when we get, uh, a lot of the students. And we probably gained fifteen to twenty on, on those days, or out of those years, I should say.
The other thing to keep in mind, um, for example, I think right now, I think right now, we're at about, currently at McKinley School, we have two hundred eleven, two hundred twelve kids in kindergarten today, and now ten of those are repeating. So now we move, you know, ten fewer kids onto first grade, which is another reason why oftentimes we go from ten sections down to nine, uh, from kindergarten to first grade.
So if we have a class of kindergarten at two twenties, eh, by the time they're in eighth grade, it's probably closer to two forty.
And class sizes at that, at, at eighth grade are not, I mean, they can be a bit bigger, it's easier to manage.
The thing about kindergarten, not to view, putting on boots and, uh, snow pants and jackets and that whole, there, there's a lot. Plus you're teaching them the key things of literacy, I mean, that's, so...
Kinder, kindergarten teachers are, they're special lots.
Yes.
You can find, if you can find someone that comes to an interview, oftentimes will ask in a, in an interview, hey, if you could teach any grade level, what would it be and why? And if you can find someone that says, you know, I'd really like to teach kindergarten or first grade, that's really, uh, that's really nice, when you hear that. Because oftentimes, a lot of people will say, you know, third or fourth grade, third, fourth, fifth, seems to be, uh, you'll find plenty of people that are interested in teaching third or fourth or fifth grade. So, um, I heard Melanie say that there's four, four days of school left, there's...
No, there's three days left. If I was in school, I would have never made that mistake. I was a teacher, I know.
And, and this week, if you, if you just, just a little word of advice, if you, if you run across a teacher this week, don't say to them, you know, if we would have had a normal winter, mm, no. I tried that last week. Don't say that.
Any questions?
No more questions?
No more questions, Eddie.
Okay, all right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. We'll have Dean Monkey, our secondary, uh, school principal, come with you.
Hey, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I think one difference from last year to this year, uh, is just maybe in relationship to the amount of staff that we've been looking to hire uh, over the course of this spring as compared to last spring. It was unbelievable last spring and early summer. And so it's been much more manageable, uh, this year. But with that, we've also gotten some great help. So, um, we've, uh, secured a couple of special education teachers, which are extremely rare and difficult to find. Uh, special thanks to Shannon Erickson and John Steinbrenner, who helped with those, that process there. We're looking to fill a part-time social studies, we've already filled an elementary position here in fifth grade. So it is looking very positive, just in relationship to the staff that we've already secured for next year. And, uh, you know, nobody quit lately. So that's, uh, that's real positive too. So, um, and of course, uh, we're very, uh, we're honoring our retirees here at the end of this week. And a couple of music there, you know, in elementary, uh, we're gonna really miss those people. But I think we've got some, we're in great shape in relationship to our hiring, both in the elementary and at the secondary level. High school graduation last Friday, um, went well, uh, I think. We got everybody across the stage and upright, which is wonderful. Special thanks, uh, to the board members that were present. I think that's the largest, uh, group that we've had in a long time, that we're able to be there, which is absolutely wonderful. Nice to see that, special thanks to Matt for his address that evening as well. And also for the Thursday night before, in relationship to our ALC graduation. Again, I think the second largest group we've had on stage in the last six to eight years, uh, in fifteen on stage and twenty overall. So very happy about that as well. And then with our third high school, uh, here, uh, in IQ Academy Online School, um, close to forty graduates, with sixteen, I believe, again, the largest number we've ever had that came and showed up for the actual graduation ceremony on Friday. And it is so fun to meet those families and hear a little bit about their stories. And to a person, as they enter for a reception that we have for them, uh, and at the graduation ceremony, they are so thankful. This is an educational model that is available to them. And so we can't say enough how valuable, uh, it is to those families, uh, when they, uh, when they show up on that evening. They're just bubbling, um, with the fact. Met one family that was very interesting, that, uh, the father had lived here earlier, moved away, heard about our program. Twin daughters that had a chance to graduate with us, uh, so great story there. Couple other things, we have just completed, um, our Saturday school for our middle schoolers. And, um, pretty consistent attendance up until when we had some breaks. Whether that be around the Easter break or whatnot, then our attendance fell off a little bit. But it's great to get some of those students through because now as we do our, uh, middle school, summer school program, we do eighteen days, eighteen mornings in June. A lot of those students have finished, we'll fill it in with some others. And, uh, and just give a lot of students an opportunity to complete some coursework there, um, in that. Mainly it's seventh and eighth graders that come back for us. But Linda Zidini and Gary Hoffbeck will help us with that, uh, once again. And, uh, so we're looking forward to run those. We'll start that on June fourth and run through the twenty-seventh, uh, I believe, of June. And then I know Kristen over at the ALC, uh, has got some dates already picked out for, um, summer school for, uh, Area Learning Center. And some credit recovery that can go on over there. Basically, for those students sixteen and above can qualify for that credit recovery program. So we can get a few more students through with a few additional credits, um, so that's worked out well. And then, um, we're looking forward to welcoming some of these new staff members to us as early as June twelfth. Elaine has done some good work to set up a, um, new staff, new teacher orientation for, uh, June twelfth. And, uh, we'll see if we can get, uh, as many of those in here as possible, along with maybe an opportunity to meet their mentors, if they haven't had an opportunity to do that yet. So we'll hit that on June twelfth, and then again in August too, if we've got anybody that can't join us for that particular date. So lots happening at the end of the year. Questions for me?
Just want to compliment Mr. Monkey on the graduation ceremonies. The detail that he goes through to make sure everything goes right is amazing, so say thank you.
Having to switch the soundboard at the last minute.
Yeah.
We only have one soundboard at the school, is that?
We, we have three.
Okay.
Uh, of which, uh, two of them should go in the garbage for recycling. And we are already shopping for a new one. Special thanks to the Center for the Arts for helping us out. Roy Anderson was in there for two or three days, uh, trying to help us set up. Our media director here, he's absolutely fantastic. But yeah, somewhere in that eight hundred to one thousand, you know, dollar range, we can get a twelve to sixteen channel board. So they're not all that unbelievably, uh, expensive and very valuable when you need them.
I think the analog ones that aren't super computerized are pretty cheap.
Pretty, pretty cheap and pretty dependable, but, uh, I know we were down to six, uh, six channels out of sixteen, I think, that we're working on this one. And then, uh, so anyway, special thanks to Center for the Arts who, uh, helped bail us out on that one. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, Superintendent Ness?
Yes, uh, just doing a little bit on, uh, the poll here, MRA sent out an, an analysis this morning here. So the, the end, end of the budget, so two and two in the formula, so it's, it goes up a hundred and twenty-six dollars per pupil for the next year, and the following year, a hundred and twenty-nine. Special Ed, uh, ninety-one million to freeze the cross subsidy, which is, it's very helpful. Voluntary pre-K does not affect us. Thirty billion in one-time funding for safe school grants. Maintain and expand funding for rural career and tech ed, so that's good. Maintain state support for concurrent enrollment credentialing. Aid to school, this is a big one, uh, that, right now, aid to school is forty percent of a farmer's bill on a bond. So like, our bond for this building we're sitting in is paid for by the state. So for the school district, it does, it doesn't affect us. But for the farmer, forty percent, well, that increases to fifty percent, and then if the, the, uh, if the funds are there, it'll go up to seventy percent. The, the biggest reason is this, May is a big bond referendum month. Every single bond passed in the Twin Cities, one hundred percent passed in the Twin Cities. Fifty percent passed in outstate Minnesota, in, in greater Minnesota. So that's a huge one for, for rural Minnesota.
Wasn't it in the twenties for, for rural before, or was it, am I...
Well, it depends on, depends on years, but this, in May right now, it's fifty percent. Uh, it, it really depends on if you're doing it at a general election or not, silver, yeah. And then tier-two equalization, uh, there's, there's some dollars for there as well, and that's just a, a general summary. So, yeah, pretty interesting. So this week, uh, like I say, we have three days of school, three full days. We have two track meets here though, which is going to really be interesting. So, uh, a CLC meet is here on Wednesday, so we have a lot of traffic issues we'll be dealing with. And then we're actually hosting the six-A, I believe it is, track meet on Thursday, which is craziness as well, uh, but we'll, we'll manage. And, and then Friday, uh, we have a district meeting at eight o'clock on Friday morning, and then following that, uh, we have a, a light breakfast for staff, and, uh, the retirees will be in the cafeteria. So if you're, uh, available, you're certainly welcome to stop in, uh, for that. So we will have staff, uh, documenting the, the remaining days. We have Special Ed Paris will be here on Friday. They will also be here on next Monday for a training that is being, uh, sponsored by Education Minnesota. So I think those are, so we got about a, you know, a week left here with staff, and then, then we'll do all of our state reporting, end-of-the-year stuff, you know, into, into early June. and then we'll do all of our state reporting, end-of-the-year stuff, you know, into early June.
What time is the Friday thing?
Eight o'clock is the district meeting. And so by eight-thirty-ish, we'll, we'll be there, yep.
Any questions for Super Tenets? Thank you. Moving on to our resolution acknowledgements.
I'd like to offer the following resolution move for its adoption. A thank you to Lowell Carpenter for the donation of a saxophone and Jim and Cheryl Wool for their donation of a snare drum to the Kennedy Secondary School Music Department. Thank you to Melissa Reese for the donation to the Otter Angel Account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals. Congratulations to Jackson Rody, seventh place, and Haley Merchant, eighth place, for meddling at the state-adapted bowling tournament.
Missy offered that resolution for its adoption. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limkey?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
He's speeding.
He's speeding.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the general consent items. We have the minutes for the May 13th board meeting. Personnel, Elaine Jentz.
Yes, as you heard from Dean Monkey during his report, we have hired a couple of Special Ed teachers. And they're on the agenda for approval. That would be Melissa Randall, and she'd be working here at Kennedy Secondary School. And then Sarah Steinbrenner, an IQ higher. We also have under personnel a certified staff resignation of Nate Pillsbury. He is a teacher over at Cleveland, and that would be at the end of, actually, at the end of the school year. And last, we also have a nineteen-twenty agreement between us and our food service director, Lance Wells. And it's for one year just to make him in the same cycle as the rest of the individual contract. So that's the reason that it's a one-year, generally speaking, it's a two-year. And so I recommend these for school board approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just had a question on the, on the contract for the food service director. Is that, is that like a standard contract? That wasn't in our packet, I was just looking for.
Correct, it's all, like all our individual contracts.
Okay.
They're, they're somewhat a standard. It's the same type of a health insurance package as all the individual contracts and those pieces, yes. Yep.
Any other questions?
And I missed, sorry, I stepped out for the food. How many years is that?
It's one year.
It's one year. Is that, is that always one year?
It'll get into the cycle with the others, which will be two years.
Okay.
It's more typical. But in the contract, it's still at-will. Even though it's signed agreement for two years, it's still an at-will contract. So that can be, and, 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 for anybody, not just in this case.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. There is no old business. Moving on to new business, we have the extend school year service and summer school for special education students. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Annual motion that needs board approval. And that, we have a few of those coming up here. Annual, annual motions.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Item number two is we have the rate start summer programs for kindergarten, June, and grade five in August. Do I have a motion, somebody offer that motion for approval?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Item number three, we have the 2019-2020 Resolution for the membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Result that the governing board of school district number 544, county of, county of Otter Tail, state of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of inter-scolastic athletics and fine arts events referred to in Minnesota Statute Section 128(c)(01) to the Minnesota State High School League. And so hereby certifies to the state commissioner of education as provided by the Minnesota statutes. Further resolve that the Ferguson Falls School is authorized by this, the governing board of said school district or school to one, renew its membership and the Minnesota State High School League, and to participate in approved inter-school activities sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Further resolve that the governing board hereby adopts the constitution bylaws, rules, and regulations of said league and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook on file at the office of the school district or as appears on the league's website as the minimum standard governing participation in said league-sponsored activities. And that the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility and for the supervision of such activities are assigned to the official representative identified by the governing board. Somebody offer that resolution and move for its adoption? I'll offer the resolution for its adoption. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limkey?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson, yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number four is we have the concurrent enrollment program memorandum of agreement with Minnesota State Community and Technical College of State for the 2019-2020 academic year. Somebody offer that resolution, I mean, somebody offer that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion on that?
Wow, that's a big jump. And it's a lot of money. I mean, I understand how important it is for us to offer those classes, but that just seems like a huge, an exorbitant fee hike on their part.
And if people don't know, it's twenty, is there, they're going to increase about twenty-four percent over two years?
To three thousand dollars.
And they, they act like it's an incremental thing, but it's, it's a lot.
It seems to me like their, their reasoning was they want to have the same three thousand dollars for every school and for every college. But yeah, I mean, isn't there a difference between us working with MSCTC versus more than I work with them, more at state and, you know, somebody in the city's working with you? Why, it doesn't make sense to me.
No.
And not disagree with anything here. The, the idea is to offer this courses in-house is a benefit because then you, you saw MRA's numbers, you know, sixty-five hundred a pupil unit. That goes to the college. And so it's, it's, it is higher, but it's still a benefit for us to keep the students in our buildings, so.
Yeah, we just, thank you, everybody, just kind of, it's kind of like the.
We just get better food and less of that money, it sounds like.
Correct.
Do we have, just out of curiosity, and I'm not suggesting, is there another option besides?
Well, we, we have, we have, we also have some math with University of Minnesota Crookston. Do we have anyone else right now, Dean?
Nobody else right now. In the past, we've looked at Southwest State, Marshall, but that was in the sciences as well. So we've got no good offerings at this point besides those two.
And this is Minnesota state system, so it's going to be the same no matter where you go now. And that might be part of their method as well. But yeah.
So we don't have a choice but to approve this? If we want to come to graduate classes?
There's certainly areas you could, at this short time for next year, but certainly you, you would have to look forward in future years here and. And it's not increasing this year, this is for the coming years. Yeah, they did step it in.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Item number five, we have the 2019-2020 Curriculum Implementation and Purchase. Do I have, somebody want to offer that motion to approve?
I'll offer that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
This is what Catherine Anderson was talking about prior. And, and this has been, has gone through the tech, tech committee for review and curriculum and back rack. All of, all of those have reviewed that, are recommending this purchase to the board.
And the price tag on it is?
Boy, I couldn't give you an exact number, to be honest. It's right around the one hundred and twenty-five thousand. And that's not including the technology part. The, the total, I would say, is just shy of five hundred thousand for technology, facts, and everything. I think it's about a hundred and twenty-five for facts.
And for perspective for the community, that's normal, basically.
Yes, absolutely, yep. And we, we have gone as low as two hundred thousand, but in better times, that five hundred thousand. Especially this year with updating a lot of teacher computers, projectors, all of that, we were spending close to the five hundred thousand.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Item number six, we have agreement between Design Intent Architects and ISD 544 for internal remodeling of the old Target Building effective May 14th, 2019. Do you want to talk about this?
Yes, you know, we have a, a contract right now for Design Intent for Heritage. We're taking a lot of that work, moving it over to the Target Building. So it's a, but it's a different building. Needed a different agreement to move forward. So all this is happening quickly here as, as we move forward. We anticipate we'll have closed on the building by the end of August. We're, we're looking, you'll see the next one is the review and comment for the, for the state of Minnesota. There's some documents from Design Intent already for there. And, and moving forward, so we can start building, build out by end of fall. So we're ready to go for the following year, so.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Melanie.
I'll second.
Kirby, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Item number seven is the review and comment for the Minnesota Department of Education for the creation of a new preschool center. Somebody offer that motion?
I'll offer that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Did we have to do this for the Heritage Building as well? We did not. And it was interesting that Mark was contacted the Department of Education and, and just said, oh, you'll need to do review and comment. It's like, what? We're not owning the building. So we were actually surprised that we had to do this. So, but he said, anything over two million dollars. So we, we, we were under the radar at, at Heritage, but not with this. So don't anticipate any, any problems with it. We used Morehead's template for how they use their Sam's Club purchase. And, and Mark was scrambling before he was heading off. As I said, this is twenty pages, there's a lot of, there's a lot landed. Mark was the bulk, absolutely. You know that he did that. And I know he was busy.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Item number eight, we have agreement between Lakeland Mental Health Center and ISD 544 to employ one full-time, school-based, mental health practitioner effective eight-twenty-six of 2019 to twelve-thirty-one of 2019. Do you want to speak on this?
The idea behind, this is basically a social worker that we're looking at having. So McKinley will have a standalone along with Adams and Cleveland. You'll notice this is just for six months or the first part of the school year. Then it'll go in the same rotation with the others. So we, they have a January one, December thirty-first fiscal year. So you'll see this again probably December is when you'll see it.
Somebody offer that motion to approve?
I'll move for that.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Well, as the board knows, we've had some additional discussion about the program. And we just have that real urgent need to address the behaviors of the students in, in our building. I think this is a good program. And it is, I think, a good first approach in handling the kids. I'm going to encourage as the contracts roll forward with Lakeland for our board to consider asking for an RFP and maybe just hammer, nail it down some more details about. It would be really, as this is, kind of a flagship program. You know, the state, one of the state heads wanted to review it. We don't have a lot of statistical data. And I'd like to see if we could measure some effectiveness because I think it is a very good thing. But just look for an upgrade as we continue to approve these contracts, so.
And this, I think we're at the tip of the iceberg of mental health issues that need to be addressed. And, and our staff is talking about it all the way from kindergarten up through the high school level. So it's probably take a good hard look at all of our mental health services, training of staff, curriculum in school, a lot, lots of things that need to be addressed.
Right, it's, it's, it's one component of our holistic approach.
And hopefully, if we address it at a younger age, we don't necessarily have to address it at an older age.
Great.
Well, and back to that earlier comment about the trunsees, I think the families that we can't find now are likely some of the families that we're going to see popping up on the trunsee. And the behavioral thing, and the earlier we dig in, the better off we are.
So true.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. And item number nine is the award the bid in the amount of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars to global specialty contract aim for Kennedy Secondary School pool renovation. Do you want to talk about that?
So they, they finally got one bidder, and here we are. So we're, we're definitely there. I think it's a little bit higher than what Mark had budgeted, but it's in the range. So recommend approval. And that, this will basically shut down the pool end of June into July. It's three weeks to a month, and this is, these are the pipes that need to be replaced. They'll also look at other parts of the pool when, when the water's out. And I know there's some tiles at the bottom and, yeah. Mark, Mark will, he'll keep you up to date. The pool is costing us some money right now and.
Let's just build a brand-new pool.
Let's not comment on that one right here. And we'll, we'll, yeah, okay. I'm done.
First of all, somebody want to offer a motion to approve?
Great timing. Yeah, great timing.
Somebody offer that motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
I had a, there's a detailed question. So the base was one eighty-nine, seven seventy, and the major replacement. So is the thousand dollars per linear foot, is that included in the? It is, and then if there, yes. And then if there's more work that needs to be done, then they'll negotiate it. Yep.
Hopefully, it won't be.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. That concludes our regular school board meeting. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, June 10th, at seven AM, right here at the Honor Community Room. Following the adjournment of this meeting, we will go into our work session to talk about marching band, kindergarten enrollment update, and application for educational benefit process. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.